Morning, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. At.
Nine oh one AM.
The adoption of the agenda. That West Elgin Committee of the whole adopt the agenda as circulated. Not moved by Bill, seconded by Michelle. All in favor? Carried. Disclosure of any pecuniary interest, a reminder to disclose any pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. So you know. Update draft. Twenty twenty-three budget.
Good morning, everyone. Um, so. In front of you, um. You, um, staff is presenting you revisions to draft two of twenty twenty-three operating and capital budget. Um, I would like to go through, um, capital budget first. As, um, it's in more detail and clear, uh, what, uh. All the changes are, um, indicated. So, um, under administration. Um, we had, uh, two capital projects listed initially. Uh, one of them was security cameras and the other one was server upgrade. As you can see, uh, server upgrade has been removed and I have invited our IT manager, Dan Belent, to the meeting. And he will speak, um, on, um. Server upgrade, uh, options.
Dan, are you able to join us? We can't quite hear you, Dan.
How's that?
Better. That's better.
Morning, Dan.
Morning.
Get on with your presentation.
Sounds good. Um. To summarize, uh, what was done in order to get the number you're looking at. I had Dell run a data collection tool for twenty-four hours to. Understand exactly how much compute power, uh, is necessary, uh, in our current state. Um, I will note that there is no plans to increase. Um, as far as the IT compute goes at West Elgin, rather. It will likely decrease, uh, in, within the next five years, uh, with the move of some certain services to the cloud. Uh, the other thing that was arranged was a financing quote through Dell. Just to offset the cost of the server replacement over three years rather than a one-time fee.
So just to add to that, um, the expense is not going away, just like, uh, Dan mentioned. Um, we're, um. Splitting, we're splitting the expense over next three years. So that eight thousand dollars that we're budgeting for budget upgrades. Is showing under operating budget now. Does anybody have any questions for Dan or myself?
So you know, let's thank you, Dan. Thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
That would date.
Um, next item under, uh, capital, uh, budget are the buildings. So at. The last meeting council asked to defer can council chamber renovations to the following year. So that fifty thousand dollars is now showing up under forecast for twenty twenty-four. And, um, I just wanna bring council's attention to Old Town Hall building as, uh, and make sure that council understands that. We are not budgeting anything for this year, um, but just to make sure, um, concept. Plans are done and finalized. So basically, um, this year could be a year to bring those plans to a public meeting perhaps. But if council feels that, um, this should be deferred to the following year, um, I'm good with that as well.
Okay, any questions on that one?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
It just needs some, so if we defer to next year, we would present to the community the plan that has been designed with the Elgin Library.
That's correct.
Have we done a feasibility study on the Old Town Hall building?
No, no, there is cost associated with further studies and, um, basically, uh, we would have to. Put that in our budget if that is the case.
Okay, I think where I, I've been trying to give this a lot of thought, especially through the budget. Where my concern is with the Old Town Hall, we were looking at grants, but it seems to be chicken egg. Problem. So we need to do a feasibility study to see if it's even worthwhile applying for grants to fix up this building. Looking at our other buildings and even the library, I'm fearful that what we will be doing is be doing feasibility study, design studies. And then adding yet another budget line to our taxes every year of a building that may not pay for itself. So I think it's more just the more I think about it, I don't know what the solution is, but I seem to be going around and around that. I see the importance of the Old Town Hall building. I'm very concerned that moving forward with any of these grants. Will end up costing us in the long run because the building may not be feasible. So it's more so just pondering, like, I, I, I don't know what the solution is, but. It also just continues to sit there. A lot of other communities have had success reaching out to public partners to take on buildings such as this, which would create revenue for the municipality. And would remove the burden from us. I am wondering if. The library would consider continuing to move with a different partner. The design has already been done. Are there people who are interested in? The building as it is to get it up and operational before weekend because it's just sitting vacant? I, eh, these are just more like their thoughts and it like, I just, I don't know what the answer is, but I flipped into even more grants for feasibility studies. And you can't get the feasibility study grant done until you show that you're ready to put your shovel in the ground and we're not ready to put the shovel in the ground. Could we reach out to large donors to see if they can help us get a feasibility study and then put the library through? But then it's, you've asked to ask for large donations from big corporations to get this moved through. And what if we find out that it is actually not viable through the feasibility? I'm just putting these out there that. I'm a big believer in what the town hall could do for economic development on the main street. I just don't see how we can get there. And if we continue to defer it, we will not have those grants. That are available, right? Because they run out. But I don't think we have enough money to move forward with the two grants that we have. So. I'm just look like it's, I, like, I don't understand what to do with this building. Have we ever looked at someone buying it?
No, we haven't.
I'm, I'm not saying that's where I'm going. I, I am just putting this out here for discussion, like, I. It, we don't have room to put it back on this year, I don't think. Um, and then we're just delaying it for another year. But by then, we would need a feasibility study done before we move forward with the two grants that we have from the government already. So we should then be putting money aside right now to do a feasibility. My concern is, is looking at this, our feasibility study is going to tell us that it is not feasibly going to run it, be able to pay for itself. So we are yet adding another asset to our budget line that the taxpayers will have to be responsible for.
So what you might be suggesting is looking. But maybe for other options? Or?
I'm looking for other options. I also think there's maybe smart people out, maybe someone has a better idea. I, just like I said, I, it's chicken. I don't. Know how we can get this project started. We don't have the money necessary. I looked briefly into what a feasibility study would cost. It's a ton of money, right? And then can we get it done in time? And then for the grant that Jana looked into, we would have to have the feasibility study done, the two drawings done. And then we have to be shovel-ready in order to apply for it. And I just don't see, like, I, I can't wrap my head around how with. This, what we are working with, we will be able to get this done within the next five years.
Just, oh, that, that grant would cover a feasibility study.
Well, it does, but then we have to be ready to go, right? And this is. The part, like, it's just everywhere I looked, we are running, we're going to run into a time problem. And it looks to me that basically as a municipality, we probably need. In reserves or something, almost three to five million dollars to get this. Ball rolling. And I think we could maybe get some money back, right? Like, this sometimes not works. I'm just putting it out there that it seems like it's an incredibly large challenge and I don't see myself to see any solution. Readily available.
Yeah. Well, when it first came up on the table, you know, suggestion about what we're going to do with the town hall. I mean, things have changed so much in materials and, and everything else. So now we're looking at a totally different price than what we were in the first place. So it does create a problem.
Through the chair, could we set up perhaps an ad hoc committee? Who could be looking at this town hall again? Like, I'm, I don't want to add more work to staff. But I think we do have to make a decision probably within the six, next six months on where long-term we are going to go with this. And like I said, there may be a solution that I just can't see that it would be available, but.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And, and then we can concentrate. On the town hall and, and come up with some sort of answer that we, you know, what we're gonna follow. So. We've got a plan we can follow because of the committee, then I think it may be a good idea. Yep.
Through the chair. So current grant that we have been pre-approved for is for the amount of two point five million dollars. Um, so that grant, uh, requires, um, municipal contribution of twenty-six point seven percent. Of the total amount. Um, and then there is a federal contrib- contribution of forty percent and provincial of thirty-three. Um, we certainly don't have enough money to cover. Um, our portion. If we decide to move on with the project and the cost, uh, will not exceed two point five million dollars. Currently, we have approximately four hundred thousand dollars, um, in, um, in reserves. That four hundred thousand dollars is for all municipal building renovations. Um, unfortunately, uh, council cannot make decision without, um, receiving, um. Um, technical studies and information from not staff, but, um. Engineers and, 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 you know, um, firms that specialize and they can make an assessment on the building. And, um, assess the total construction cost. Uh, without that, we don't know what the, um. Um, and dollar amount is going to be, um, and if there is a need, um, council can direct staff to. Proceed with that study, perhaps feasibility study and then cost estimate, construction cost estimate study. And then, and use the money that we have in reserves. Unfortunately, this grant will not cover. Uh, the cost of feasibility study as, you know, this was something that we were supposed to. That was supposed to be done before we applied for, um, for, for this grant. So.
Through the chair, I think where my mind was kind of going is in the committee, because staff doesn't have a lot of time, is that. Across the country, have there been an example of a municipality selling a building with a general? Idea of what it's supposed to be. So the buyer knows that the library, like, the library has to move in, that it has to contain. Things. Are there organizations that have rented? And then improve the building themselves. I'm trying to think of what Centennial Hall looks like, that there is a different board and organization that is funding. To keep those doors open and they provide the revenue. So the committee more so for me is what creative ways? Are there out there that have been used? And they may not be many that we can not put in. Taxpayers' money necessarily, and that there is an organization or the board that continues to run it. I. I'm looking at the Covent Garden Market as another example of a building that is owned by the municipality, but it's self-sufficient on their budget with a management and a board of its own. It's.
So what, sorry, just what you'd be kind of creating something like, um, a downtown improvement. Business improvement area, or you'd be creating a board of management like we have with the arena board.
This, it's just trying to, this is what I'm saying, that it's not, I, like, I don't think it's feasible for us as a municipality to be taking on the renovation costs. So. I, I would love to see it move forward. Could we take a couple of months and put some really great thinkers to it to see? What other options are out there?
Yeah. I agree, we should look at it that way.
So I'll, we can bring the information for requests for an ad hoc committee to council, because only council, like you as a council, can set up a new committee. Um, and I guess think the idea of who you want on it, um, if you wanna look for members of the public. Um. That type of idea. However, it's can't be a quorum of you guys. So, just, just keep that in mind.
Has anyone else got anything to say on this matter? Okay, so. We'll move on from that one. I think we, we've got a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
What we're doing.
We're moving on to, um. Fire. Um, so for transit and arena, there was, um, no revisions to the capital plan. However, um, as I mentioned, um, during last meeting, SCBA two packs. Um, was missed, um, in capital budget. So we, um. We put that amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget as well as we have revised, um. The cost of washroom renovations. Um, we're estimating, um. You know, the total renovation cost, uh, will equal close to a thirty thousand dollars. So, uh, that will basically. Um, Rodney Fire Hall is approximately twenty-five years old. Um. Nothing has been done, uh, to washrooms since, um, uh, the fire hall was built. Um. Washrooms desperately need, um, refreshment. And, uh, with today's accessibility standards, um, they have to be too cold. Um, also, um. Demographics are changing. We have, um, now females on our fire department. Um. Fire, uh, firefighters' training, um, has increased, um, significantly. Uh, volunteer firefighters are spending more time in the fire hall. So. We have pretty much no choice but to, you know, keep on refreshing and refurbishing our buildings and facilities. Does anybody have any questions in regards to those two items?
No.
No. Right?
So you know. Move on.
Uh, we're gonna move on to Prograsco Trailer Park. Um, council requested, um. To defer stairs to the beach project to twenty twenty-four. Uh, this, um. Change does not affect our op- uh, operating budget or capital budget, uh, for the municipality. And, um. And then under roads, um. We've, um, revi- there was one small revision made on, under greater. Um. We were able to, um, come up with more accurate cost of the greater, um, so that amount was, uh, decreased by fifty thousand dollars, which is good news. And, and that's, this was the, um, last revision that was made, uh, to the capital budget. Does anybody have any questions?
Oh.
No. I. From there, um, we're gonna move on to operating budget. I've tried to, um, highlight in yellow all the revisions I have made to, uh, operating and, and, um, and capital budget on this page. So there was no revisions under miscellaneous revenue. Um, under council, um, there, there has been, um, as I mentioned to you, we are in the process of. Uh, closing, uh, twenty twenty-two, um, fiscal year. So, um. Last year, at the beginning of the year, we, um, changed our payroll system. And at the end of the year, we discovered that, um, certain codes, um, were not, um, developed, uh, correctly. And one of them was employer health tax. So the system, um, was, um, calculating, um, employer health tax deduction. Or expense, I should say, um, wrong. Uh, this was, uh, um, every year, at the end of the year, we reconcile all payroll deductions. And this was discovered at, uh, the end of the year. Payment was made to, um. Revenue Canada and, um, that's why you see that additional line item because. Um, with the changes, when we developed the budget, we were, um, comparing it to twenty twenty-two actuals and there was nothing at that point. So, um, we did not budget anything, but the issue was corrected. So, and, um. That additional fifteen hundred dollars we, um, included in our operating budget. Under administration, um, under equipment leases. So there is, um, so basically. Um. Yes, so the additional item that was added to that, um, account was the server replacement. So this is going to be the cost, annual cost for the next three years. Um, under, um, strategic plan, pay equity review and organizational review. As you may have noticed, I have, uh, there was another item, uh, previously, um. Uh, was, um, uh, included, which was service delivery review. Uh, we decided to defer it to twenty twenty-four. As there are, council decided, uh, to move on with strategic plan, pay equity review and organizational review. Um, strategic plan and pay equity review was already, uh, approved by council. Um, organizational review, um, I was trying to obtain quotes from, uh, neighboring municipalities who have completed this type of, uh, review. Um, a few months ago, um, the cost for, additional cost for organizational review is thirty-five thousand dollars. And, um, I will be, uh, bringing, um, report to council once, uh, budget gets approved. Um. Because council is gonna have to decide, um, whether the entire organization, including firefighters, should be. Part of this organizational review or not. Um. When we, uh, did organizational review back in twenty nineteen, um, fire department was excluded. Back then, um, uh, my suggestion would be to include fire department with this. But again, that will, report will be brought to council, um, in the near future. Um, and then, um, server replacement, there is nothing as, uh, it, it is no longer capital purchase. Under municipal buildings, um, I, we were able to, um. Um, we were able to do, um, allocation of, uh, cost of municipal insurance, uh, for twenty twenty-three. And basically, um, the reason why the number has changed and you know what, um, some. Some of the, um, some of the line items for the insurance, there is not much change. But since I had the actual numbers and that number will not change for the rest of the year, I decided to, uh, adjust it to. What we currently, uh, what, what, what the actuals are. So, um. So that, and then council chambers renovations, this was deferred to twenty twenty-four. So it was completely removed from. Municipal buildings budget. Old Town Hall, um, there's again another insurance adjustment. Um. And, um. I also removed, um, fifty thou- uh, thousand dollars transferred to reserves to keep, um, the budget within. Um, four percent increase. Um, under fire department, um, again, another insurance adjustment. And under building repairs and maintenance, um, fire hall renovate, uh, sorry. Washroom renovation was removed from building repairs and maintenance and put under capital budget. Um, there was no changes to policing, conservation authority. Um. Or building inspection. Oh, building inspection. There, I. Need to verify, uh. I, but I believe it was, um, highlighted in error. I think this, uh, transfer to reserves was in your original budget. So. It was just highlighted by mistake and I apologize for that. Um, emergency measures, um, I have, I was able to find an agreement that we have with, uh, County of Elgin. And basically, uh, the agreement reads that, uh, this is five thousand dollars is annual cost. Plus any additional, um, um, costs such as mileage or expenses that. Um, uh, the county is incurring, uh, for our municipality will be billed. Um. Right now, um, last year, we budgeted seven thousand dollars. Um, we haven't, we're still waiting for, uh, the invoice from the County of Elgin. Um, but we still haven't received it. So, um, this year. I'm not sure if there's gonna be an extra cost. I decreased the, the amount to, to what the agreement reads. So by two thousand dollars and I decreased it to five. Um, by law, there was no, no changes, no changes to animal control. And under, um, municipal roads, there has been few changes, but, um. The reason why there are so many, um, changes, and as you notice, they are, they all pretend to machine time. As we were, uh, we were trying to balance, uh, machine time and that, um.
Hmm.
Account is, to tell you the truth, is very hard to estimate because it is based on machine hours. So, um, we're kind of, um. Uh, we were trying to come up with the good number for this year. And as you can see, um, when initially, um. All the amounts consist of, um, um, decimals. Um, the adjusted numbers are, are full numbers as, um. all the amounts consist of, um, um, decimals, um, the adjusted numbers are, are full numbers as, um, um, it was just, um, easier for us to balance it to what the expected, um, grand total for the year, um, is going to be. Um, and then under miscellaneous wages and machine time, uh, we, um, split that amount seventy thousand and seventy thousand. That's the cost of, um, our operators doing miscellaneous things. Um, unless, Lee, if you wanna add anything on that, uh, that's, that's the cost, um, uh, for, um, to earn the re- uh, miscellaneous, um, revenue. And doing work in, for other departments or, um, outside, um, um, outside our municipality. So, um, seventy thousand dollars, uh, in wages and seventy thousand dollars in machine time is an expense. But if you scroll up to, uh, the revenue side, that hundred forty thousand shows, um, under revenue. So we collect that money from other departments. Um, insurance as well, there's another entry that, uh, was adjusted. Um, and then transfer to reserves. So, um, this is, um, a little bit, um, complicated calculation because, um, at the end of the year, uh, what we do, we add all the costs associated with, um, with running our equipment um, and maintaining that equipment and and then we compare it to, um, what it costs us, um, in machine time, um, running that equipment. And then the difference is the amount of money that we are able to save in our reserves. So we're estimating hundred seventy three thousand dollars to be that difference. Plus, um, we, um, decided to transfer, uh, federal gas tax straight to reserves. As there are um, staff is already, um, having options for council and, 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 um, and great proposals for, for the future, um, uh, cost of infrastructure. So that will be coming within the next couple of months. Uh, and then, uh, transfer from reserves. Uh, so, uh, that amount has changed, um, by fifty thousand dollars. And the reason is because, uh, that, because of the graders cost. Um, and then capital equipment, again, that the amount has changed by fifty thousand dollars. Um, we have, in order to balance our budget to, um, reasonable, um, increase, we decided, um, defer a street paving to the next year. Um, does anybody have any questions on? For the roads, for the municipal?
If anybody ever sees, you know, wants to put their hand up anytime, just do it. Okay, Bill.
Through the chair. Uh, so what, um, for the deferring of the street paving, what streets were slated to be paved?
Through the chair. There wasn't, uh, at, at this point, there wasn't, uh, streets that were identified. We put every year, it's kind of like the water budget, having that fit, or having that money set aside for, um, if there's waterline extensions. So we, we put a placeholder in every year for that street paving. Uh, but there wasn't, there wasn't specific streets identified this year. And because of putting off Walker Street, we're doing the, the engineering this year and the actual construction will take place next year. So we were comfortable with putting that, um, street paving aside for this year.
Um, okay. Next, uh, he promised county roads. So again, this is the same thing, miss, um, wages and, uh, was adjusted to, uh, what we initially budgeted. So, uh, items highlighted are just pretty much, uh, making, um, adjustments. So it kind of, um, is in line with twenty twenty two actuals. Did you want anything to add to roads or county roads?
Uh, no, through the chair, I guess, just to, just to expand on what Magda said. If you notice, uh, under the county side there, really all we did was those four numbers under the county budget that were changed, were just adjusted to better reflect the amount of time that we're gonna put into those different accounts. But it balances out to the same thing. So if you look at the bottom line, there under the county budget, that transfer from reserves is the same number and we're still balancing out the zero. So it was just a reallocation of their time between those four accounts.
Any questions? Okay. Under Service Ontario, um, revenue for hunting license was adjusted. I, it was overstated by, uh, way too much. And the reason is because twenty twenty two actuals have been revised as well. Um, under four counties transit, there was, um, no, uh, changes. Uh, streetlights, sidewalks, um, Rodney sewer, the only change was, uh, the cost of the insurance. At which, you know, every time we, um, make changes to the operating budget, it affects our transfers to and from reserves. So that number had to be adjusted as well. So we balanced down to zero. Same with West Lawrence sewer, uh, cost of insurance and, um, and, uh, transferred to reserves. And I noticed I had, um, capital budget highlighted. Let me just quickly double check. It's, I don't think it was. I'll check that our capital budget is in line with, um, yes, so West Lorn sewer, uh, that budget, there was a change, uh, from eighty five to eighty thousand dollars and it was highlighted. It was not, um, corrected on capital budget. I apologize. I will make that change as well. So again, transfers, uh, to reserves, um, decreased, uh, slightly. Um, underwater, cost of insurance, and again, transfers from reserves was affected. In order for us to balance it, balance budget down to zero. Under landfill, um, again, because there were other items that we kind of shuffled around the entire budget. Um, there is a little bit of money left in our landfill reserves and, uh, that money was saved in the past for, uh, future increases. Uh, currently, we have, um, uh, at the beginning, I, I, January, uh, as of January first of this year, we had thirty seven thousand eight hundred forty four dollars left in our reserves. And we are planning on, uh, ta- um, removing fifteen thousand dollars from reserves, leaving us total of twenty two eight forty, uh, eight forty four just to, um, compensate for, um, you know, increases. So that's what we've done. Under cemeteries, there was no change. Arena, no change. As the budget was already approved by the board, so we tried not even adjust the insurance. Um, under Marina, we did not make any changes. Under programming, holiday, uh, Christmas parade was changed to holiday parade, uh, the account name. There was no other changes made. And the recreation center, no revisions were made. Same with pool. Under operations, uh, we had to, uh, make few changes to that department. As, um, staff recommendation is to, recommendation to council is to move on with, uh, recreation master plan. So, but because of the significant cost of the, uh, recreation master plan, uh, we are, staff is proposing to split this project over two years. This way, um, you know, uh, the cost is spread evenly. So forty thousand dollars near the end of the year for this year and another forty thousand dollars or the remaining cost in twenty twenty four. Um, the other, uh, changes, uh, that we have made, uh, to this budget was, uh, we were planning on, um, this budget included, um, recreation coordinator's position. Um, because we don't have and we don't anticipate to have master recreation plan done. Uh, we don't have clear objective of what we didn't wanna do in terms of programming and how to run this recreation. We decided to defer, um, hiring, uh, uh, process or recruitment process to twenty twenty four. So we have removed wages of, uh, for that position from twenty, um, twenty three operating budget. And you, um, as you notice, um, it's reflected in wages transfer in. Um, does anybody have any questions before we move on to the trailer park?
Yeah, Michelle.
Through the chair, just going back, have we talked to the Port Glasgow Yacht Club yet about the fish cleaning station?
No, we haven't.
Okay. So if it remains there at ten thousand and they do come forward with helping to pay for half, it will just see that next year.
Yes. Any other questions? Can everybody, okay, to move on. Okay, uh, trailer park, the only change was the insurance, which again affects our transfer to reserves and we have removed, um, uh, capital for stairs replacement, uh, we deferred it to twenty twenty four. There was no revisions to Rodney Library or West Lorn Library. There was no revisions to planning, economic development and drains. So, and that concludes my presentation of our twenty twenty three budget deliberations. Thank you.
Wow. Have we got any more questions on it? Yes, Bill, please.
So through the chair, Magda, thank you for, uh, the additional work in making these adjustments. So these adjustments that you've made since, uh, the last discussion made two weeks ago, what is the, uh, the change that that reflects in, um, the tax rate increase?
So the change reflects, uh, decrease of point two percent. Unfortunately, as much as I would like to, uh, keep the increases as low as possible, um, with almost seven percent, uh, inflation last year, um, and significant increases for this year, we are unable to reduce, um, the budget numbers to, you know, I mean, um, we did, um, I presented to council, uh, major, um, significant increases that we are experiencing this year. And, and so that was, uh, insurance premiums are up again. Our, um, employee benefits are up, um, um, dust control, those are four major dust control. It's on, um, there was a significant increase. And line painting, uh, huge increase for this year. So those are, um, four major things that, uh, very notable for in twenty twenty four. However, um, you know, little software, uh, licenses, um, that, you know, it's a thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars there. Um, overall, there is a six percent increase for this year as well. Um, it costs money to run this municipality and that four percent increase, uh, affects, uh, operating budget. So there is absolutely, I could not find any more savings within this budget.
I agree. Everything, everything you think, you look at, insurances, everything has gone up. And on the same token, we have made cuts. Wherever we could make cuts, we have made cuts. So I don't think you could do it any better than you have. That's my opinion. Um, anybody else want to speak on it? Yes, Trace.
Through the chair. Yeah, it's a difficult time for everybody. I think everyone realizes that things aren't going to be, uh, easy in the next little bit. And we've done what we could. And I think we've done a great budget. And thanks to staff for all the time and everything that they've looked at and all our considerations and all of our questions we've had here within the committee, um, of the whole, as well as behind the scenes when we have a question or an email. What does this look like? What does this affect? And you've all gotten back to us quickly and let us know so that we can use our time effectively here. So, um, it is what it is and hopefully, uh, things can be a bit better in the future and you can, uh, work together, work towards that. Thank you.
Um, so right now we're, uh, debating on, um, operating budget that is council comfortable with water and sewage rates. And, um, would you like me to go through that presentation again? Or I have, just so you know, there was absolutely no changes to, um, rate increases from what I have initially, uh, proposed at the last budget meeting.
It's a very difficult situation, but with the upgrades that's needed on the sewage works, et cetera, et cetera. It's gonna be very difficult to cut those prices lower. You know, it, it, the works needed and almost urgently. So I think we have to, personally, I think we have to keep, uh, our increases the same. Anybody else? What are their feelings on it? Michelle?
Through the chair. I, I don't see how we cannot. I think if we don't, then we are just going to be paying more in the long run someplace else. I, I think it was what chlorine has gone up a hundred percent. Everything that we're using has just gone up. And then we have major infrastructure work that is going to take place. So I hate getting a higher water bill. I think we've talked about the communication of the plan, but it truly is, if we don't do this now, we are just going to end up paying for it later. And I think it will cost more later than it, we're seeing it on our bills.
I think just to keep us in compliance, especially with the sewage, um, it's a matter of urgency. Um, you know, uh, any growth in the town, we, we're obviously gonna put more pressure on the sewage. And right now it's not gonna stand it. So it's gotta be done. Any, anyone else? No, see none. Oh, I think we'll have to, may have to stay.
So we'll need a recommendation, um, out of this meeting to go to council. Uh, we do have to provide notice that they're gonna adopt the budget. So the earliest a budget would be adopted would be April twenty seventh. Um, so I have a recommendation if, and if you're ready.
We're ready, are we? Yes, please.
So that West Algen Committee of the Whole hereby recommends to us that West Algen Council adopt the twenty twenty three budget as presented at the April sixth Committee of the Whole meeting, uh, uh, council on April twenty seventh, twenty twenty three.
Can I, um, can we, we need to move there? Michelle, Bill, seconded, all in favor? Carried. Does that wrap everyone? Have any, anyone else? Anything to say before we go into adjournment? Okay, so we adjun- adjourn this meeting?
So that West Algen Committee of the Whole hereby adjourn at nine forty nine AM to meet again at the call of the chair.
Mover, dresser, Bill, all in favor? Carried. Thank you.